Yeah, it's ridiculous.
I'm going to call this meeting over to Street Park. And for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Roll call.
Popa.
Here.
Travis.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Yelmanz.
Here.
Berens.
Yeah.
Lautner, Absen, excuse me. Wessel.
Yes.
Christensen.
Present.
Ball.
Here.
Noonan.
Here.
Public council. Agenda additions or deletions? The only thing I had to add was I did this bit for the rupture actually model, but then I'm under Old Settlers as C2. And then I would like to move C1 up to the first item under action items so these guys don't have to sit here for too long.
Can we add from the financials chat about the budget?
Yeah. Two eight.
And can we slide park brochures in there somewhere? We're running out or...
Yeah, it's on number five.
Is that already there? Okay, never mind. Sorry.
Any other additions or deletions?
I move with approval of the agenda with the changes.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. Okay. We have Bob Johnson and Steve Fryder from Glen Lake Community Church. If you guys want to come up.
Yeah. Thank you. Let me just do it from here. I tweaked my deal a little earlier today, so it's going to be easier for you to see. As you all probably recall, last year we came before the commission and asked for permission to use the Old Settlers picnic ground for a free concert for the entire Glen Lake County community on July 27th. That was the date last year. And you granted us permission. The only issue at that time was insurance, and we provided you with a certificate of insurance consistent with your request, which was a million dollar liability coverage. We went forward with the concert. I think, I don't know if any of you attended, but it was a smashing success. If you talked to the sheriff's department, they were there, I think they would tell you that our volunteers had all the parking and everything under control. So it really turned out to be, frankly, it turned out much better than any of us had anticipated in terms of how we were able to accommodate well over 600 people in the park that night on rainy night, and we had a great time. So we'd like to do the concert again. Again, it's a free concert. It's a fundraiser for the young life ministries of the Glen Lake Maple City Seer area that our church does with the Glen Lake schools. The date this year is July 13th, which is a Saturday evening. The hours of the concert would be six to approximately 9:00 PM. Again, we'd be responsible for all but cleanup and everything else. What has happened is that I think since last year's concert, the county created an agreement that they want organizations to sign to use county park facilities for something like this. And that agreement was submitted to us along with the insurance requests. We've taken care of the insurance. We've sent along to Laurel the indemnification policy. I think there's a wrong date on it, but we'll get that corrected. We've added the workers' comp insurance, even though in our case, the only two people who would be covered by workers' comp are the pastor and an assistant pastor who happen to be, you know, they'll be there in person and in spirit, but they really got nothing to do with the concert. But everything else is being done by volunteers. The one issue that seems to be sticking is that in the agreement that you want us to sign, there is a section, section four, which essentially, if you read it, requests or demands that we, as the licensee, agree to unlimited liability, which would be liability beyond the insurance policy that we've provided. In the insurance policy we've provided, we are prepared to name the county as a co-insure, which means that you all, we, anything that happens, you're on our insurance policy. That first million dollars goes first before anything else can happen. But we simply cannot, and our church consistory has met on this, they have discussed it with lawyers, we cannot agree to unlimited liability, especially when you read the language, but it's because it suggests that it's liability for things that we may not have any responsibility for. If somebody gets injured during the course of the concert, the agreement suggests that we're liable for that, even if they were over on a swing set that, let's say, was not well maintained by the county and something happened on the swing set, or somebody walking down on the dock on the park and fell into the lake, that the way the agreement was written suggests that we would have liability for that. So I have sent back to Laurel language that we are prepared to agree to, and I think if that issue can be resolved, I'm hopeful then that we can go forward with the concert. We like a decision because frankly, we're a little over three weeks out right now, and we've got some work to do in terms of promotion and everything else to get done. But we held off on doing that until we are confident that we can do something out with.
I'll answer any questions anyone has. Questions?
Where did this agreement come from? Wait, what form was sent?
I have a copy with me here.
It was what, it's what the county has been using, and without us developing or finalizing our own park use agreement, that is what was forwarded to Glen Lake schools when they wanted to use it.
It's what our council came up with.
Yes.
That lawyers came up with.
Correct.
I wanted to make a comment because I have had an association with Bob and Steve for several years as we worked with them to reform the food pantry and the Catholic Church and the Health Link and all the good they're doing for the community. And I sure hope we can figure out a way to make this happen because it's good stuff and it's good for kids and good for family and good for our county. I'm frustrated by all the legal stuff, but I understand that's the society we're living in. But I sure hope we can find a way to make it work. That's for me.
Casey, is that something new that wasn't there last year?
Correct.
Yes, it was not there last year. Last year was just the one that happened?
Last year it was just that we have the $1 million policy. This year, we not only have the $1 million policy, but we also are naming you at the county as a co-insure, which means that anything that happens, they have to come to us first. They can't, there's no reason to go to the county. You are indemnified by us for anything that happens during the time of the concert as covered by that policy.
Was there anything a little wrong last year?
Nope.
That's in place.
Right.
The problem is the unlimited thing?
Yes.
What does that mean to you, Ty? Is that...
I asked a question. Did anything go wrong?
No.
Scott is saying something.
There were a lot of complaints about parking, and the stage was parked on top of my bushes. I wasn't very happy about that, but...
This is the first time I've heard of either of those.
I didn't say.
Kyle, does that stage make any sense to you, unlimited liability coverage?
With the parking. Well, Melinda had a problem there.
Parking issue? I remember after the fact that there was discussion here about things that happened. The unlimited liability, I think, would be basically, yes, we want to give insurance, but we also want a straight, whole indemnification of the county. Basically, the county's not going to be liable for anything that happens to this event. Now, the reality of that is it's kind of probably a fiction, because if, I don't know how well-heeled the church is or the organization is, but we can't, even if we have them indemnify us, if they get bankrupted, whoever's going to still come after us anyways. So I don't know.
Or is it, it sounds like something that the insurance companies simply won't provide. So by having that in our clauses here, are we just shutting everything down? I guess is my question.
I mean, they could just say, I mean, they could sign an indemnification agreement. And I mean, the reality is, at the end of the day, they're going to, if something so bad happens that a million dollar policy is not going to cover it, when they are totally limited out on their financial resources, most likely, and I imagine, because it's our park, we're going to end up in the chain of people who would pay. So I, I think that's kind of how, I'm not a P.I. attorney, but that's kind of my understanding.
Realistically, I don't see any, or I watch years of park, you know, agree to write the laws.
Yeah.
All the guys are essentially shut down, you're...
That was our question. I mean, you have, you have the Old Settlers Association that uses the park for its event. You have the Women's Club that uses the park for the flag raising on July 4th. You have the Women's Club that uses the park for the weddings. We know that neither of those organizations even have the liability insurance, much less. So, you know, we, we just, this is something we can't reach. And if this is a requirement, we're going to have to look elsewhere.
Situation with the owner of the town preserve.
Is anybody up enough on our stuff to say what it is we have going? You know, we're not too far away from having our own agreement document and policy and such. I can't remember what's in that with regard to this. Kyle, would you...
Well, that's actually what I was wondering. I don't have it funded. I thought our policy said no fundraising.
That was my next, they didn't do a fundraiser last year. They didn't pass the hat. It was not promoted as a fundraiser.
Absolutely.
It was not a fundraiser. They didn't pass the hat. So it can't be that this year. We do not do fundraisers at the park.
Well, it can't be a pass the hat?
It can be, but it's not a fundraiser.
No, it can't be.
It's going to be free will offer.
Right.
Just like this.
Yeah, that's, we're working on our own policy, and that's one of the things, because it comes up, people want to do, it could be a kids fishing day. And there's other people who want to do kids fishing day, but they want, you know, that would be a fundraiser for their nonprofits, and fundraisers being, to come do the fishing, you're going to give us $15.
People can come and come to the concert, listen to the concert, walk up and leave and not have to do anything.
Are you able to change this? I mean, if this just came from legal?
Yeah, I would hope.
How are we going to be able to, as quickly as they need?
Right, and that's changing.
That's what I don't understand.
Laurel, I've been working back and forth with these guys for a couple of weeks here trying to get this all straightened around, but without us meeting and approving, you know, we've probably approved the heading on those recommendations, but is that going to fly above us? I don't think the board tonight actually have to decide. I'd say, here's our policy, and we agreed with the person in the board. However, you as a board got to get out of this clause that says unlimited. I move that we give Casey, you know, the authority to work with Laurel and Chad and legal to try and iron out the insurance question with regard to this group in the event that's going to happen. And in the event that that is done, that this group can move forward and have their event like they did last year. Good work.
Well, I have a question here. The insurance policy, million dollar, there has to be a premium with that.
Not, no, we pay the premium.
That's what I mean. You pay the...
Yeah.
The church is paying the premium. So since the church is using the park, that seems appropriate that they provide the insurance and the county's asked for a million dollar coverage. After that, it seems to me that if there is an award and access to a million, that that would take more accounting. In other words, the church is holding the county free of the first million dollars.
Plus legal fees.
Yeah. So I, well, my view on this committee here, I respond to the county and say, look, and it's covered for a million dollars. Worst case scenario, it should be two million. Why, whoever had that happens, probably small. Do anything up to a million, they'll protect it. I think that ought to be enough for the county after that. They need to assume some risk. Right now, their county is assuming zero risk. And that's just going to shut down the other entities like the church. Why can't they go do anything?
Just a comment. The bump to two million isn't much. And if you want to sweep the pot during the negotiations, if my motion flies, are you ready to go with two million?
I can't, I can't say.
I'm just saying.
I have no, I have no idea. I have...
Your group and me, and your insurance agent can tell you that in five seconds.
Sure, they could, yeah. Yes. And that would just be, you know, that would probably just be an additional cost that we'd have to tack on to...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, the difference between one and two million is a smoke bomb.
Well, let me ask you this.
I got you.
Does your organization have, does it own its property?
Yeah, I own the church property.
Where do you think your assets are?
I have no idea. And I don't, I really don't.
Okay. Oh, you think that, I don't know, I get your finances, but you think that the church is worth more than two million dollars?
What he's asking.
Is that piece of property worth an additional million dollars as close to Big Glen Lake? Yeah, probably. But, but, you know, I don't think that's, I don't really think that's the point. The point is, we're not going to go out and put the entire church at risk to raise six or eight thousand dollars at a concert. We, I mean, if we have to, we can go, we can go elsewhere. We would prefer not to, because quite frankly, again, for anybody who was there last year, the community, the reason we're doing it again is because the community begged us to do it again, because everybody has a good time.
No, I'm just asking, not because I want to expose the church, just what is, what is the effect of an unlimited? Well, if it's only another million dollars... Maybe a reasonable proposal to our attorney is to ask them to get a larger policy, because we're not going to get anything more from them on an unlimited, because an unlimited is only what they have. We're still going to be in line. So maybe to our councils to say, well, okay, for a larger, riskier event, something you want that's unlimited, maybe we ask for a bigger policy, because there is no more to get than fast a million dollars from them on an unlimited. So realistically, a three million dollar policy is almost better from the county's perspective than an unlimited.
Yeah.
Because we're actually going to get the money.
Right.
So that's why I'm asking that question. Not to, I don't want you to do that. I'm just trying to get the dollars and cents of what is here. So maybe just a larger policy.
And are you going to do the same thing for the Women's Club and for the Old Settlers Association and their...
I think it's a lot of the same thing.
You know, I mean, well, if we're going to be treated differently, then, you know, let us know and we'll make our decision and go.
One of the things we're looking at, and we have looked at in a lot of these things in our policies, is setting tiers of number of people. So little things like you want to do a fifteen, but others wants to do a class, there does get treated differently than a large scale. And I don't know where all this has come from, but internally, we are looking at different tiers of events. So that may be something that we bring in. You know, if you get over 200 people, maybe we do want more than just a million. The million, you tell, anything you want to do, we say a million. So, and I don't know where this has come from internally from the county, but I'm just trying to parse through what may be a reasonable...
Negotiation.
And if we really want to be safe, we ought to chain the gates and not let anybody...
No, and I'm...
We're getting a little bit off topic.
Sorry.
I just wanted to probably reiterate, it seems like we have a clause somewhere in our use policies that is insurmountable for any group, because insurance companies will not touch it. So obviously, that's going to have to change somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that us, and we do have one lawyer here, but I'm hoping we will not be trumping our own council, our county council.
With the motion?
No, but with whatever policies we're coming up here.
They didn't approve it.
Obviously, I can't trump the council.
They didn't approve our policy.
This is, and thirdly, I do believe the rules should be applied evenly and fairly to every single group we deal with, which they have a great point. We cannot decide to sometimes apply them and sometimes not. It's a very, very bad aspect we're giving to our community by constantly doing this.
Yeah, I think nobody's proposing that. No, and I think...
Wait, wait, just on...
Yeah, well, yeah. That's, I think, what we're trying to grapple with when we're trying to get our policy together. It's taken us a long time because there are a lot of facets that we have to talk about, like three very different parks. The Old Settlers celebration has been going on for 100 years. So that's, you know, we're not going to change that.
Did they give us the one chair?
Insurance, I don't know. The Women's Group has been dusting up and cleaning before and after weddings at the chapel. And we don't allow people to come and use the chapel for weddings, other than having this group of women organized, and they come and they go. If someone wants to drop a few bucks in the pot, it's for them. It's just something that's been happening for probably 45 or 50 years. So those two things are historical, and we're grappling with the idea of how to do the levels and how to integrate those two things specifically into what we are doing with the policy. We're just trying to come to grips with what we need to do to be proactive and have it happen so it's safe and it's logical. The only reason I went to the two million thing, because I went from a million to two million. I'm a farmer. I go across this county highway with my fruit. The kids are going back and forth with the fruit during harvest. So I'm going with a million, I'm going with a million. And when I went to Reup five years ago, 10 years ago, my agent said, well, have you thought about going to two million? It's just this many dollars more. I mean, you know, it makes a lot of sense. And most people in my situation are carrying that. I said, sure, go for it. What did he, the up was a very small balance amount, but B at two million versus one. I'm just throwing it out for a possible conversation for a negotiation. I would like this to happen. I wanted to try to give Casey enough firepower and throw out enough ideas that maybe we could get this to happen, because we probably won't be meeting between now and then it needs to be decided. Anyway.
Casey, you've been on this for two weeks already?
Back and forth with Laurel, yeah, because they, you know, we got the agreement.
Are you getting anywhere?
What's that?
Are you getting anywhere?
Well, basically, we have to meet here to approve it first without us.
To approve the event.
To, yeah, to, if we have approval of the event, and then we can try and work through the insurance terms with our legal counsel.
So your motion didn't say anything about approving the event?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It did?
And the motion.
Okay.
The motion.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
And Casey will...
Okay.
Now that we have approval, if this passes, we have legal counsel. We just need to get the insurance worked out, and we'll try to get that done before the end of the week. If that's approved.
Tell the question. Okay, tell the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I'll get ahold of you in the morning. I'll get ahold of Laurel first.
Great. Thank you. And I have news. I've sent her proposed modifications.
Right.
Our insurance company has okayed with, so she's got everything.
I will call her immediately in the morning.
Good, good. Thank you.
I'll let you know.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
It's great that you can't charge her.
Why should we have to protect her so much?
No.
Why should I have to stop her?
Now, moving on to the five-year plan.
Close.
Hi.
Got $1,000.
I didn't get a look at your agenda, so I just was curious how much time we have. I can think of more than a half hour shortage.
Three minutes.
Okay, so I've got five minutes. Well, we have some things to take care of after.
Okay, so how about we say 45 minutes?
Perfect.
Okay. This is Dallas Worris, Worris, if I can say that, with Z at the end. He's a landscape architect in our office, and he's helping me on his project. So he's got some stuff together for me today. And why don't we go ahead and get done the agenda? And then I'm going to walk through sort of, oh, or quickly, our local services that was approved by your process and the board and you, and we're excited to get going on it and get it moving. It's going to take us about to the end of the year to get this made a document. So we've got some work to do. It includes probably two, three, or four interactions with you and some other stuff. So I'm going to kind of wade through that first. How many of you, I'm going to, we're going to make this fun, so everyone's a serious and I'm going to try and lighten it up, because we are talking about recreation and fun stuff hopefully, right? It's all about fun parks and trying to get the system of parks maintainable and user-friendly and the wish lists that you desire as a community to add or to improve your perks, right? This process will help consolidate those and... Consolidate those ideas into a cohesive plan. And the plan is supposed to be a living document. How many people use your current recreation plan in this group? Have you read it ever lately? Okay, so hopefully, the idea behind this is it helps you as a guide so that you're on the same page as a committee, because somebody in 2014 put that plan together. How many people helped work on that plan? So even the people that work on that plan have to look at it lately, which means probably is not helping you that much, I guess. So hopefully, it'll help you more, whatever we, what comes out of this process will help you more as a committee. And then secondly, that it's a working document that you can edit and use, because things change as you go through the process. How many things changed in Veronica Valley as we started the planning process? And how many things have morphed and kind of had their own life? And so it shouldn't be a static document. It should be something that works for Settlers Park, for Veronica Valley, and for Miles Community Park. And honestly, as a system, for your benefit and as a committee and as a board, it's not, they're not mutually exclusive places. So one thing I told Dave is when we talk about these places, you know, every one of those committees kind of incumbent to know what the other guys are doing, two guys and gals on the subcommittees, because it is relevant to the other places that you're working on. And I know that Clayton, for example, was, why aren't we doing this for Miles Community a couple of times? You said that. And Steve has come to me a couple of times, and Miles, I haven't heard a lot from Old Settlers, because it's kind of had a life of its own. It's the oldest park in that group, and those subgroups have worked on things and just said, we're just going to get it done. And that happens, because they're not engaged enough maybe in the whole process. So hopefully, this plan will help you all. I'm going to pass those out. So we're going to look at these things quickly and then put them aside, because they're for you, and they're, just so you know what we're, we're engaged to do with the county. The recreation plan, this is your, this is for cover versions. This is your current recreation plan. Everyone's really using their reading here. We use this to help us start to work on Veronica Valley, because this is the basis by which you can write for grants, to save the mission. If you don't have this, you can't write for grants. So guess what? Veronica Valley is out of luck right now if we wanted to refund it. That's why we're kind of doing this, because it really isn't in place. And this plan, and it exists for five years, and we can amend it within that five years. If there's something significantly changing, not too hard to do, but you also have to renew it, and the DNR requires it, or else you're, like I said, you're out of luck to go for grants. So this, there is a format to this, and the... So this, there is a format to this and the, our scope of services which are in front of you right now and that schedule are based on the criteria in the VNR format. So what we have to do is go through a process of evaluating each of your facilities. So Pat, the first phase is just basically going through and doing just like we did for Veronica Valley, which we can plug into this and there's new things that I need to catch up on. But each of these parts I need to know, we need to know, the forensic exam, let's call it, the vital, what's going on there now, what are the existing conditions, what's the current plan? And does any of it correlate to what was listed in here? Is any of it done? Is, is some of it still wanted or is still desired to be done? Are there new things, right? So items one point one through one point four really are gathering the data and putting it into a, into a, an updated format, which includes us going to the sites, looking at and photographing, maybe meeting with committee members on site and assessing what's out there. And that's why I've asked for the most current information on the plans. So all of a sudden, if I saw a plan, there's a sketch plan or LA or somebody drew a plan and that was the base, the committee had to do that. And I, we need to get that back, we need to get that and we need to understand where that committee is. And I think, is Belinda the chair of that subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll test it here later. But, but that gives us a chance to understand that a little bit more and maybe help that group get a little traction on something that they might be trying to do as well. But again, it's a subgroup of this group, so it's kind of like as those, as one park goes, so does the other. Their only, the park system's only about as healthy as its lowest common denominator, so all of them need your support as a committee or else we wouldn't have a recreation committee. And they all need to be sort of front and center. Down in one point five and one point six, we're going to update, this is a, this is amazing actually. This is kind of the principal, these are all the recreational opportunities in Villarreal County. And there's over six, there's over sixty places you can recreate in the, in an official public capacity in this. And there's a whole database within your document that talks about each one of these places. And we're going to talk about that more in a moment. Your products are these three red periods, right? So, but look at everything else, including the national lake shore. It's not often you get a county that has this much resource. So the good news, that's, that's, that's probably good news for you because pressure's off, like you shouldn't have to worry from a county standpoint of providing more recreation. You just have to do what you're doing now, do it well. You know, if you're going to have a park, do it well, you know, and maintain, make it safe and make it functional, make it useful. So that, so this plan will help, help get there. The rest of it's kind of around their own, but there's all sorts of cool things to do. Let's see what we have under here. So we're going to go into some other things here in a moment as an exercise, but the inventory maps are going to get updated a little bit. Mostly it's still the same. I just did a parking whenever last year that, like, there's an inventory description in there, it's totally different now. It's going to get updated. And we'll try to get that information from, say, Elmwood Township or from Bingham Township or from wherever to get their particular places updated in the inventory. But most importantly, on one point five, we're going to work on a couple of things on each of the parks. And it's really object, goals, objectives and action steps for any of your facilities. And it could technically include this building. I don't know if this is used by any groups for recreational uses or this property, but even like the Veterans Memorial, technically, probably something that should be on this list because it's used in a leisure time or recreational way, kind of within quotes, because it's a public space. So, you know, those kinds of things, we, we are trying to gather in this process. So that's the first half of the effort. And roughly if you look at this, this Gantt chart here, that, we started about a month later than, than normal, so we're going to push this thing into November before we get the public hearing rather than October. But so we'll use all of the rest of this month, July, well into August, to do the, all the one point items, all the first date items. And that includes a couple of things. It includes this kickoff meeting and it includes some work in July, and I've spoken with Dave about this, with each committee, each subcommittee. So what I'm hoping to do is from this meeting, get some dates nailed down and kind of look at where we can talk, what I would call a planning day. Maybe we can talk with each committee for an hour and a half and just dive into them, each one, and get as much work as we can done with that separate committee in July, because you don't have a regular recreation committee meeting, I believe. But then in August, we come back with that information gathered and have an overall park and recreation meeting. Hopefully we'll be able to use an hour of your time then and kind of go through that part. And then, and then everyone's going to get caught up in that process as best we can with each of the individual places. Does that make sense? So that's how we're going to use the time and our interactions with you in phase one.
Now, did everybody get that? He said it towards. Are mutually agreeing to a day where he can cover all three committees' parts.
I mean, it'd be the most efficient, right? And giving us come up three different times.
But each of us, each committee or representative of the committee, if it's one person, it's only an hour and a half.
No, what I'm going to do to, to make, hopefully make that even a little more useful is that maybe each of the committees we actually meet on that site, okay? So we'll go to the committee that proves at that site. We'll go start up here, we'll start here, we'll go here. Geographically, it appears it's not very far, right? So we're going to do that so that we can be on site and actually visualize some of this and talk about it. So use the shelters at each of the respective places and, you know, it won't be snowing.
It'll be raining.
So we're going to organize that. We're not going to do it now, but we'll.
Yes, sir.
We're going to get it set up that way again. Yeah, and I think, I would recommend meeting with two members. Right. Possibly of a, of a committee. Right. It's not a quorum of a committee. Right. No, no decisions are being made when we're gathering information. Then it would be an informational. Yep. Meeting per se, and we'd have to run through Laurel and everybody, but I think it might not, might need to be posted, but there won't be a quorum and there'll be stated in the posting. There'll be no forms, no decisions made. Early information gathering. Yep. And I think, I think we could meet at those individual parks that way. However, it has to happen from a, from a legal standpoint or a administrative standpoint. There's some looking at. I think that would work. Okay.
Great. It would be an announcement of a quorum, but no business or we'd have.
We'll take care of them.
Yes.
So.
We'll have to post them, so.
So I guess the point being.
So there's going to be three meetings, one at each park?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, we're going to use that, we're going to use that day, our team's going to use that day to do a couple of things, interact with each group but also to start doing some site assessment and be on site with you all so we understand what you're dealing with better. I mean, we understand a lot about Veronica Valley. There's a lot to learn still there because it's obviously a lot of pressure on the county versus, but that may be the case with the others as well. I think it is.
Be nice if it was the same day.
Yeah, and if, I'm hoping it would be, you know, you know, but we'll be, if it can't, then we'll, we'll, we'll use our time wisely there and we'll use our inventory time if we have to meet a couple hours, you know, by having each group. So we're going to kind of get that into the July conference. And the hard part about that, and I appreciate your two-person, because if we try to get each, even each subcommittee, it's too many people. So somebody's got to be willing to, the chair hopefully will be able to get one, possibly two more people to get on the meeting group and go from there. And if, and I don't know if we have to limit it, I'm not trying to limit anybody on those committees, but we, we need at least a couple people, right? And then, and then from there we can really hopefully gather the best information for this. So one day there'll be three different spots with three different. Right. And they'll move from. Yeah, they'll move, yeah, but it will move. That'll be a good day. There'll be a lot of good information gathering. So again, back to the recreation. So that takes care of sort of the front end of this, which this document, the DNR requirements, that's, that's a, that's a bunch of data that really doesn't get you anything, but you've gathered it now. What do we do with it? All right? That's where it gets harder. So we have to figure out a good mechanism for this committee to work on the information that we have gathered. And it gets even more interesting because we're also required to get more public input. All right? When you renew your recreation plan, you have to put this up for public comment for eventually a doc, a public hearing and adoption, just like a master plan or anything else. And that is an opportunity for Joe Q Public outside, who might not, might not know anything about any of the parks to be able to give, I want a Ferris wheel at Miles Kimberly Park and you can say, great idea! And you can figure it out later, you know? No bad, nothing is a bad idea. I remember when we were doing Veronica Valley, some guys came in, I think they were talking about disc golf, weren't they? Those two fellows, they were talking about disc golf and I thought, boy, is that going to work out of Veronica Valley and all that good thing. You know, so, and we have disc golf at Miles, Miles Kimberly, and you really need another one at Veronica Valley. We don't know, but the public has to have the opportunity to say what they think. And this, this is Villarreal County Residence, okay? Doesn't have to be everybody in the world, it just has to be advertised for Villarreal County is having a public recreational input meeting. And that, and that, what I envision with that is that it would be a, and now we're phase two, it would be an open house, maybe using a room like this and providing the current best information that we've come up with from the wish lists, okay, from the committee's work and having it available so to say, hey, these are the visions for that we currently have for these parks. And you have an opportunity to speak to us about what you like or don't like about those or if there's anything you think could be approved. And they get that input, we gather it, the document.
That's not the same as the public hearing.
No, no.
So there's two of those.
You have to have, you have to actually have an opportunity. The public hearing is really a formality before you make a, a motion and adopt a document. People can speak, but at that point, the document's, you know, pretty far down the path. So it's a public meeting and then it's also later on a hearing. Correct. Two separate things. Right. Correct. Yep, so if you look at the Gantt chart there.
Or you can disclose this meeting.
These little diagrams are targeting this meeting. So I'm going to try to fill those in.
So we do township level.
I'll just open the public app for public hearings.
The hearing is covered.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is that at the township level, when we have a public hearing for like planning, we open the public, or the planning meeting, go through our steps that we need to go through, close that meeting.
Yes.
Open the public hearing and then close the public hearing, go back to the meeting and finish up. So it's all when we're all here together, they're sitting over there, we listen and let's, it's a, it's a one, one-off. It's not a meeting in August and then another meeting will be claimed.
That's a way to do it, but if you're going to take true public input and allow them to interact with, you know, the public, interact with you, usually it doesn't work very well in a, in a scheduled meeting. It needs to be sort of a separate. So we have that built in that way, especially for recreation planning. A good example, when we went back to Elmwood, a couple of different times we did the open houses. And it is kind of more of a family oriented, so you can bring your kids in and try to do it at a time where people can actually get in and out. So we actually had it as a couple, a couple hour window.
Block.
Yeah, block of time. And that's, that's really the only way you can give people a chance. Otherwise, if it's five o'clock on your normal meeting day and you got an hour and it's going to be in the middle of another agenda, it's a little hard to get.
So how does it count as a public hearing if you're not having it?
No, it's not. That's a public input session. And that counts for one.
So that's not a public hearing.
Exactly, right.
It's not a public hearing.
We got two different. No, that's not to say you can't do it the way you mentioned during that public hearing day. If it's on the agenda to, in the normal meeting agenda to talk about the park, and the commissioners want to talk about the park and the PNR people and the audience talking with the commissioners about the park and recreation draft plan, that's fine. But then they'll float, they'll close that and they'll do the public hearing as a little entity where, you know, even there, where you actually execute a decision is what that's about. Do you adopt the draft?
So it's just a public input, it's not a public hearing. It's either there's an actual public hearing to adopt.
So if you look at this chart.
Adopt the plan. I got you.
What I'm doing.
The action is in the hearing and input sessions is a think tank.
Yeah, so at two point one is where I'm doing input sessions. We're targeting those in September. The public hearing wouldn't happen until November.
Got you.
Okay? Because then you also have to put the draft plan, once your body approves it, you might need to put that to the county board, say, we're ready to put our public, our draft recreation plan out for public comment. It has to be out for thirty days before you can have a public hearing. And the end goal here, by the way, is we're trying to get this adopted before February of next year. And believe me, once you.
For Veronica.
The holiday season, November, December in there, it's really hard.
To be able to operate.
Yeah, to get.
Really.
So we're.
Well, I understand that.
Okay, so does any good questions, good, good feedback? Anyone have any general questions? I don't know if it's easiest for us, Dave and Casey, or we'll just work on dates here for your normal meeting. I didn't look online to see if you've scheduled all your rec dates. There probably are. Yeah, there's.
We're not. This meeting won't take place in July.
Right. But you have regular meetings, August, August, September at Gilbert, November, like that.
Yes.
So I can fill those in. What we'll have to figure out is the special session with the subcommittees, which happens at day one in July. And then we'll have to kind of target a time when that public input session in September happens. It doesn't have to be correlating with people meeting. Okay. It could be anytime we think it makes sense. It could be in August, and we were talking about this a little bit, sometimes we do it before school's out. Usually that doesn't gain a lot of kid input because it just, they're so busy with the ends of, of summer stuff that they're, they don't want to come to a meeting. So actually we get a little bit more interaction of this somewhat. Sometimes we've done it, I can remember probably, we do it on a weekend?
I think we did it in the evening.
In the evening, yeah. I know one was tied with Easter egg hunt though one time.
Yes, I didn't go to that one, but yes.
We had a lot of, there's fire trucks there too, so.
Yes.
Yeah, because you build these parks for kids and noticing you can have a bunch of adults figuring out what a party is every day. Yeah. You can have the kids there too, if you can, or at least some young people. So. Seems like we straddled late afternoon, early evening with the input sessions. Uh huh. Trying to. And you start at three and. And then run it till seven or something like that. Yeah, I mean, that's, we can work with that. So some folks come before. Kind of an open house format. Yeah, some folks come before and they try to. Yeah. Have dinner and come after. I like that idea. That, that works out well. Gets a little most cross-section, people can come right after work or after dinners still. Some people come right after school and they go earlier if they work in a relationship and they can come. So, and that, that gives you, you know, we'll have mechanisms to take their input. They can literally write things down, we'll tell them, they can email us to a certain place and we can take comment that way. And, and then we'll have us around and be able to interact with people. Yeah, it'd be nice to have stations, Veronica Valley Station, Miles and Old Settlers and those committee chairs. Yep. At those stations. Yep. And then maybe some other committee members can swap with them. Yeah.[1694.62] Can do the whole time or whatever. So, and I think by the time we get to that point, everyone's going to be a little more worried about everything that's available, what we know about these places. And, you know, I think, and it also gives a chance during this process, I encourage everyone, every one of the committee to get to each of the parks at least once or twice and watch what people do at the parks. Either to an event that's going on, or go fishing with your grandkid, or go see what's happening, you know, at each one of these during the season. Because that's really when the activities start to begin, and until, so. Any questions so far? So we'll look at a monthly hour kind of overlapping thing in September, we can move on from this information. But you can keep that, please, for yours, for your work, future reference. Dallas, if he could pass out this, this is next, right?
Casey, I'm only here for the third week until.
I know, more than the first.
And on for the first July, so that's the third week of August.
Okay.
Just so you know, if I need it that week, that's fine, but if it's the time, people are leaving this area, I'm gone.
So, what he's passing out now is a few pages from your current rec plan. And what we start with during our assessment are what are called the overall goals and objectives. This is, are you? Yeah, look, are you?
We can shut it.
There you go. What we're, what we're talking about there is an ability to understand what people were thinking about five years ago, or you were there on that committee. And the overall goals and objectives, and then your action plan are really what you tie your projects to. So Veronica Valley, we referenced back to this document, and it had some information, just enough information about the improvements that we were proposing to do in the grand. And the goal of this then, in this document, is we write what is intended to happen in those park plans. And so with the written goals and objectives, there should be a park plan. That's rather than just written in words. So we have one going for Veronica Valley, there's one for Miles Kimberly, that's in the process. And there's an existing plan which we'll evaluate from, from the committee's standpoint directly. What, what's happened in it, what's not done yet, and what other things are going to. But, that's the physical plan. This recreation, the goals and objectives of the recreation plan should also flesh out some intangibles a little bit. Not a little bit, a lot. So you have a physical resource, you have how do you operate and maintain it component, which is really weak in a lot of time, a lot of times not blown out enough. There's policy stuff that can emerge from this plan and should emerge, what are the rules and regs that tie all of your parks together in terms of how the county manages them? And then there's programming. So, that's what you're buttoned up against right now. How do the people that want from the schools get out there and use Miles Kimberly Park? And how does the next school get to do that? How does the church get to do that? That's the really tough work that, that happens, and it's kind of like careful what you wish for when you have these because people are going to want to use them. And then they're going to have a lot of questions on how to use them, and you're going to go, "Oh crap, we don't have a rule for that, or we don't have a policy for that." So it's, that's tough work, and I don't want to be that, I mean, it is, you are working on it. We want to catch up on where you are with that, we might have some suggestions to that. So the park plan, the policies and the operation maintenance, and then the programming of the park. You don't have Parks and Recreation Department. In Scottsdale, you're the Parks and Recreation Department, kind of, right? So like if someone used to, someone wants to play disc golf, they might call you, right? In, in the county, I don't know who they call. Because there's no real department, like Paris City's got a Parks and Recreation Department.
I was in Spain and I got a call.
Yeah, so, well then, what are you doing, going to Spain, you know? What's going on there? So, so unfortunately, by the fall, you're the Parks and Recreation Department, but that's the programming department where, oh wow, I mean, people want, when is your fishing day happening? So you can use your website and use tools to help give public information, but someone's got to maintain that and make sure it's going. And what I'm driving at with all that and in your, in your goals and objectives plan, now's the time to write that stuff down. County needs a better O and M plan for each park, you know? What does that mean in terms of cost, time, and effort? You know, who, what, where, why, why? How do we get that goal done? And hopefully, this will help organize that a little bit for you overall. So if one committee isn't going, "Well, we're not getting any airtime here, you know, we need stuff done at Miles Kimberly desperately, and we had needed it, but, you know, we've got some legs with Veronica Valley, but how can we coexist and make it all work out well and give the county the best, county board the best pieces of decision making we can give them?" So we'll go, we're not going to do much of it today, but this first set of rules that starts on page fifty, there aren't rules, but uh, oops, yeah. On page fifty-six. These are general goals and objectives. And I want to, I literally want to go through this and see what sticks and what doesn't stick from the, that's a committee meeting thing. I mean, I think this is important, and maybe we could do some of this today. Does the, does the goal, partner to leverage funding, mean much for you? And if it doesn't, what could it mean, and what should it say? Kind of questions. So to me, that's a little, maybe a little weak, because like with who? What does it answer the questions, who, what, where, why, why? So what we try to do is actually put a matrix together to be able to answer each of those questions for each of your goals and each of the objectives. So that, if that becomes your action plan, because you know who you're talking about, who's going to do the work, when is it going to be done, how much will it cost, why, and then whatever, right? So you get all those questions kind of figured out. And so that's the work that this plan should accomplish for, for the, for the things you set out to do. The other thing that is hard to show you, but five-year plan, I've seen so many plans that have a goal of, "Let's build this park, and approve this, and approve that," and it's all in 2018. And says, "How do you get that?" Well, we're going to write a trust fund grant. And then the next year, it says, "We're going to improve Old Settlers Park," and it's, "How are you going to do that? We're going to write a trust fund grant." Guess what? Doesn't work, won't work, ever has worked. So a plan that's written that way will not work. So we've, we've got to figure out other, other ways to attack the problems and issues that you have in terms of funding or to accomplish projects. There are other funding sources, and you're lucky as a community, even, even a county like you, to get a grant every four or five years from the state, like a trust fund grant, because they're just not that given that often for developed projects. So you've got to figure out, okay, we got to go out and cover money, we have to get smaller grants, we have to figure out other projects that can be done and maybe phase things. Veronica Valley's already got some legs in that way because there's some partners that are at the table. And other, the other parks should have that, that involved too. So we're going to do the overall goals and objectives program, and then if you page down a few, a few further into that exhibit from your rec plan on page sixty, it starts into the three parts. It says park-specific management plans. So I'm just going to read a couple here. So Miles Kimberly Park, it says, "Upgrade electrical shaft and maintain other structures. Expand and improve nature trails. Continue to promote maintaining." What we would like to do is go through this list and go, "All right, what's good, what's bad, what's done, what's not? What do you want to do?" In each, in this case. And then the action strategy will evolve a little bit heavier than this. Like I said, if you, your action strategy must include who, what, where, when, why, or it's not an action step. It has to have, and sometimes it's a question mark, I understand that. Sometimes you don't know them yet, or sometimes you don't know how much yet. But you have to try to get at those things so that when someone, and then, and then it becomes even trickier because then you have to prioritize them. The only way to prioritize your action steps is to actually have them. And some ways to prioritize them is go, "Well, we know the most about this, so we have an ability to move it forward." Or we just got a donation, a big donation or something that kicks something into gear, that, that action step can be worked on. And then you have an ability to, to actually collectively agree, because, "Hey, we got it here, it was in our plan, and we're going to..." The neat thing that happened in Elmwood is, Dartmouth, we didn't go through that thing when we were updating it. We're done, 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 done. You know, not done, move it down. Still want to do it? Don't want to do it, gone. And so it works if you use it. So hopefully, we'll make it user-friendly enough that you can, and we'll work together to get there so that everybody, you know, as much consensus as we can build, will have a, you know, people will understand at least what others in the community, why they want to do some things at Settlers, or why they want to do some things at Miles Kimberly, and what, you know, how to get there. So that is, that's our exercise for the committees. We're going to go through those lists, and then we'll come back and collectively work on them in August as a committee. Questions? This you took out of our present plan? This is right in your first plan. Exactly.
And the challenge for all of us is for the overall statement of goals, objectives, and action plan, which starts on, what, fifty-six? And then the individuals for each park, we need that each of us go through those and determine if they're still what you want.
I mean, you can, I would certainly encourage that type of homework, to read through it and understand what's in this thing, and go, "Man, what are they talking about?" I think a lot of these people are going to go, "I don't understand this," or, "Did we do this? I'm not sure, if we want to go in it, I'm not sure." And that's okay, there's nothing wrong with that. But I think the goal is to come out of it with an updated, you know, an updated version of it that everyone's understanding, what does that mean?
That statement.
So word sniffish, and the goal, this is, so for Miles Kimberly, for example, when we were working on Veronica Valley, this, this plan was sent to me that was done, this underlay plan, kind of an updated mess, but which is great because it puts together some vision for the place, the physical resources here. It's about what could happen, what might hap, what's there now, what could happen, it's hard to see for you, I know. But we were talking at the time with the school, well, could you do some tennis courts on this part of the property? What does it mean for the existing tennis courts? You know, is there pickleballers or not pickleball? So we just put this together as an exhibit to try and help that discussion along. The goal should still be to update this physical plan better, which is not part of this recreation plan, but it's something that this will help, to help occur. And it'll help us push through and get some of this thing refined, on what you may or may not want to do. This is an exercise in and of itself to do, but I think there's opinions and things we need to document, and then we'll decide how do we go after that. I know Steve had some box on, you know, when and how to kick that in, but this, so we want to know what is still viable here from the Miles Kimberly Committee. And then that can be brought to, forward to the Recreation Committee and discussed and interact, and interactions can happen and see what goes forward, but, you know, what can be placed into the plan. And we're not even showing the woodlot, you know, beyond that. We, we do have the boundaries of Miles Kimberly, obviously, as that beautiful forest, and the disc golf course in there. In this case, we weren't focusing on that, but the plan should show, the plan should show, I think it's here, maybe, or it's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Right, so that's a good segue. We're, we're going to finish up here because I almost forgot what we talked about. This.
Yep. I'm going to make one comment.
Yes.
Hopefully, you take more than half, man. But when you have goals and objectives, and I did it for thirty years in the industry, you had your goal. Each objective has to have an action plan, and we don't. For example, here's an objective, improve the baseball field. There should be three action items under it. First, we got to look at this, second, we got to level it, fourth, you got to seed it. That's the action items to improve it. We got another one, encourage recycling at the park. And there's no action items, let's see, what are you going to do? Are you going to pull up them, are you going to post signs? Are you going to advertise nationwide, or what?
Right.
Objectives need an action item. If you're going to expand and improve the nature trails, then you've only got, like, I'm picking on Miles Kimberly, there's only three action items to take care of seven objectives. There's no action items to do anything about recycling, there's no action items to do anything about baseball field. So that's my speech. Each objective, the industry goes through, we have an objective that agrees on, and what are your action items to meet that objective? And you can't have a dozen objectives, you got to only pick.
Prioritize.
But each one, what is your action item?
Yeah.
So that's my.
That's awesome, that's exactly, I think that's exactly right. And there's nothing, I mean, this was an effort to get that stuff listed out, and, and I think that in some cases, there was, you're going to know more about that, that, that objective, so you can have a better idea what the action steps should be. But most of the time, action steps are plural, not, or action program is going to be plural steps, not singular. For every, every objective, because there's multiple steps. For example, we want to get a grant for, you know, we want to improve the park in Miles Kimberly. What do you think one of the first action steps is that has to be in the rec plan?
Design it.
Update the plan. You don't have a plan that anyone could cost right now to put into a grant, to actually apply for a grant, and there's three or four more to ask. So it's, it's kind of serious business to kind of get from point A to point B, it's just a recipe. And you have, and what we can do together is figure out what they are, and how much you want to take on, how much you want to put in front of the county to take on, in your group to take on, because it's, it's, sometimes it gets a little daunting. But like I said, it's doable because I've seen it happen, and I've seen the processes work to go, "Yeah, this, this thing, we didn't get everything done, but we pushed that, we pushed that agenda, we got that five, a lot of that five-year plan done. And now when we do it, the next set of goals get shifted." Hopefully, the goal being here, like I said, you have three beautiful places, you don't need more. And you probably just need to figure out how to make it go on also, that's the easiest for everybody, the board maintaining them and programming them, and then for the public to understand what they can do there. So, that last handout that Dallas gave you is, again, this recreation facility. This is good homework. I would love for you, if you don't have a copy of this, maybe that's first homework. Every Recreation Committee member should have a copy of your current plan. And the next thing is, if you can, just take a peek at it and learn, try and, try and figure out one thing you didn't know, and I bet you'll find dozens if you didn't even know about this place. And I mean, because I, we've all lived and played in this county for a long time, and this stuff, you can think of nothing else.
Probably. We covered a lot of territory.
There's a number of things Clayton doesn't know.
There's a list, this will be helpful, use this list. Okay, back in here, there's an inventory list that goes correlates to this. So if you have Hendricks Park, anyone know where Hendricks Park is?
Yeah.
Name the township, right? Maybe point out what's there. There's a list of those, all the stuff that's on that map in here. And we don't have to memorize it, but at least it's a reference, and it's a great, I mean, gosh, if I moved to this area and I wanted to know where I was going to go buying something cool to do, this would be a resource for the public too.
Point's in my head.
You know? And that extends your recreational capacity as a county. So I would, I would, you know, ask everybody before the next committee meetings that you get to know, refamiliarize yourself with the county parks, this park, county recreational availability. It's either color-coded out for who owns it, right, and where it is. We're not going to do a lot of recreating everything that's there, there's some updates that'll happen. And that'll kind of set us up to zero in on what we're trying to do. Behind that, what do we put behind that now? Yeah, the goals and objectives, let's own them in that. So just behind that, sorry, I just, I just wanted to show you an example. Like, we did Glen Arbor Park, so we'll get into this chart, and the Glen Arbor Park description says it has a basketball court, or tennis court, picnic area, et cetera. We got some upgrades, we're going to update this where we can, and we're also going to ask people like Kyle, who I know deals with the county, he's still doing one in the county, right? So, you know, we can probably look in their rec plan, and we'll kind of update where we can in this, in this list for the next five years that we want to improve. And, and so that's an example there. And then back to your parks. They all have park boundaries, they all have, are in some state of design. These are what were in your last plan, so you can see that from this plan to what, to what I've been shared with in this process in the last couple of years, there, this is at least what should go in here, and maybe some improvements to this. At least a better list, right, of stuff. And then, I don't know much about the woodlot, how the county manages the woodlot, or the golf course, or anything. I know it's amazing back there. All the peaches gone, I'm dying. And then, you know, this is a detailed plan, they're gone. Yeah, they're very good, the big ones are gone, you know, so sad. And then there's, there's the plan that I have, and that's the plan in, for Settlers Park, in the Recreation Plan. So I know there's a better, there's a more detailed plan there, you know, the work's been done. So we want to get, gather this information. And then there's what was in the last plan, a little bit more is in there, but the boundaries are for Veronica. So Veronica's got the most legs for update that I think we can update and plug in here without regurgitating what was done in the, on all the planning stuff. But that was, that's because you spent time doing it, your committee, you guys worked hard to get there. And, and there's more to do on these other ones, but I think we can get these appropriately updated. And I think that's all we just wanted to do today, was accept any answers or any questions. It'd be great if you could kind of keep some of this information, and like I said, I don't know, how do we get this to people? PC, is this online?
Yes.
So everyone can either print it on their own, if they don't have a copy, or just use it electronically, stick it on your. use it electronically, stick it on your device, and look at it occasionally, and learn from it. And then, and that'll give me, us a much better chance of helping allocate it, if you, if you're familiar with this.
So, if we see changes or something that's necessary?
Doc, yeah, write down.
Do you?
Yeah, for now, just keep them, and we'll figure out the best way, a clearinghouse to kind of have an email to us, probably be the fastest way.
Because you didn't talk all this to us, this is just an example.
That's just where I, that's just an example of where we're gonna, you know, we need to update.
Got to run through this piece of crap.
Yeah, so it'd be great for that kind of input, as we get ready to start editing the document and putting it together. Where, our next step is, we're going to format this as a, as you would any kind of publication, and get it kind of mopped up, so that as we start working on these sections of the document, we can start improving them and updating them. So, and it's, one of them's gonna start, like, the writers very upfront, they wanna know what your administrative structure is in this document, and, and what that means is, how do you govern your parks? And the little chart that they show is not current, it looks like this, we don't have this, this, it looks, it says, Board of Commissioners, Priority and Budget, is what they're responsible for, which may or may not be true, oh, policy, but, sorry, Parks and Recreation Commission, are you the commission?
Yes.
Okay, Planning, Implementation and Maintenance, so the parks, and, I would put a subset under that and say there's three subcommittees that are helping to decide those things, and then over here, it says Staff, Maintenance and Administration, I wanna know more about that, just, but Scott does it all, Maintenance, Administrative, Support. But you have vendors, so, and one, you have some people that do some work for you, that you wire out, so there might be another subset. But anyway, this is administrative structure that is a requirement of the grant, and they posted some descriptions about budget, annual allocations, et cetera, so. Part of that we learned with Veronica Valley, how much money is being put and spent to do the things we normally do at Veronica Valley, what equipment's there. One thing we also try to help do is to try to flesh out, what's, what do you need to try to go to the board with to say, hey, this is, we need to have a slush fund that helps us replace A, B, C, D, down the line in these parks, you know, or maintain, we need to repaint this pavilion every two years, it's gonna cost us much, you don't wanna do that a year to do it, we need to have that in a budget ahead of time. And so, hopefully, that will help, will help to get some of those action steps into the, into the plan.
So, the homework for each of us is to go through this path to review the goals, the objectives and the action strategies, and John answered my question, really, the action for each objective that needs to match with an action strategy.
I'll bring you some examples of kind of how we've done it in the past, and, and, yes, so you have goals, and you write them out, it might be something small, it might be something big, and so, it might, it might manifest into several things as far as action to do, to get to that goal, you know, it's, you know, it's, wordsmithing and getting it as accurate as you can, you know, saying broad, broad, fresh statements doesn't help anybody, because you don't have a way of even doing it necessarily, you don't have even a, a clue, you know, how you accomplish the goal or the objective, so, yeah. And then, the other one is just get your hands on this and get familiar with what you've got out there in the world, we don't know.
I got one, just to, kind of off topic, but you talked about recreating here, Mav, who grew up on this property, he's a former Kelkask deputy, but he works as the bailiff now, and we were talking about the property, he was telling me when he was a kid, there's, I believe by the road, a creek, they used to fish trout out of there when he was a little kid, I don't think we even have, like, trails or any acts, I don't even know what status it is, but if we're gonna, very off topic, but I didn't want to forget about it, and mention it to everybody that, when you said recreation here on this property.
Well, I mean, do people, public groups use this room ever? And maybe not, maybe it's not available to, but, yeah, it's just a thought, because a lot of, you know, like, County Hall, Elwood, that whole property's used for recreation, because it has facilities.
I think we tiptoed up against it, you know, using the trail system here.
Yeah.
On the campus, and then we backed away from it, there, there's some, some considerations in that the jail is here.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that's good, I'm not trying to encourage it here, I'm just curious if that's, I mean, it's another county facility that may or may not have something available.
Okay, we get, our plate's pretty full with the three.
I, I would agree.
We tiptoed up against, we looked at this path system, and then, we backed away from it for a number of reasons, but, there's a potential of having a path system incorporated possibly down more toward 204 and not up here, you know, there's, there is a lot of potential on this property, but.
And it's interesting, because it may come up in public comment, it might say, hey, can we, you know, is there an idea?
I don't want to try.
And, and that's why your committees pay such high dividend or high, high funds to, to, to be on the committee, because you have to make the hard decisions of whether or not it even makes sense to put in the plan, even though it's public comment, doesn't mean it goes to the plan, it means it goes to the plan officially as part of your action program, because you have limited resources, and you and only you guys know what definite they are, and if you don't even know that, then at this point, you have to, I think it's hard to think of it. Yeah, we're, we're good to go today, and you might have to, if there's anything else you need from us.
Are we going to look at a date here in July for?
Yes.
For the traveling meeting?
Sure. The one, the first week, right? No, second week, I think.
Second week's gonna be better for Steve and I, probably.
So, the week of the eighth? Eleven, Thursday, 11th is there. Dallas is going to the 10th, so, like, my staff, my staff's gonna be there, so 11 is probably the earliest we can do it. We could also go in the week of the 15th, if that works for anybody.
The 11th works for me.
Okay?
Yeah, I think, I think, if we get any later, man, Casey's gonna be in an Archer, and if I only get to that, I'm gonna be on.
Right, well, isn't that supposed?
So, 11 looks good.
Okay.
Fine for me.
Dallas is gonna work on some stuff while he's gone.
Can you, can you send us a schedule?
Is there any preference to, to where we start and not start?
Are you gonna try to do it, like, all in the morning, or all in the afternoon?
You know, I'm just gonna put that on my calendar that day, and we're gonna work on building our county parks that day, so we can, we can be really flexible as far as what we need with the committees.
We're gonna need two hours.
Yeah, I'd like to put a two-hour window on each site.
Start at six in the morning, go up at the first one, at eight in the night.
You can start at Old Settlers, I'll be there.
Okay?
Yeah, do Old Settlers and Veronica, then Miles.
I like it, no, it works, because I'm probably gonna have work in the morning, and I can make the afternoon, that's on the calendar.
So, is that Old Settlers, Veronica, and then Miles?
Yes.
No. So, your first major decision on this rec plan, what are we gonna do?
I need to pick Miles, Miles the chair of Miles, so let's do Miles with him, I think he might be the, the least flexible in the group.
I found that to be the case.
I mean, I don't have anything, but usually, if I am gonna get something, it's gonna be in the morning, so, after lunch should be better.
And if it has to go another day, we could do one set on Friday, if we had to, we'll just, you know what I mean, we got, let's say 11 and 12 in there, if you get this nailed down, I mean, I, we'll, we'll, we got plenty of other.
So, you wanna try and do Miles at 11, do Old Settlers, like, early, like?
Old Settlers, let's just say 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Miles.
At noon?
1 o'clock or noon.
Okay.
And then Veronica can be 10 and 20. Say that one more time, please, if you would. Old Settlers at 9:00.
10:00.
10:00. Old Settlers at 10:00. Miles?
Say 1:00.
I'd say 1:00, because we gotta have a little sandwich in there.
Well, yeah.
And then, when that's done, whistle with Veronica.
Say, make that 3:00?
3:30.
3:30.
All the way from there.
$3 for Old Settlers.
Say 4:00. So, it's, it's 10 a.m., 1 p.m., 4 a.m.
Yeah, they're thinking an hour for lunch, two hours.
Does that, does that work?
Yeah, we can, we can start it one hour earlier, if we wanna get to Veronica by 3:00.
Well, Kyle works, oh, Kyle has to have the one, that trip.
Well, we can, yeah, we'd go 12, you know.
Unless you wanna move Veronica real early, and then you're Kyle's last, and you're driving 9:00 and 11:00, you're a few hours in the car.
Let's just stick to that schedule that we outlined, and if it doesn't work?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll nail that.
I can be a.
Veronica 3:00.
I'm just gonna set up.
4:00, I heard they said.
More.
Thank you. Brandon?
I can start at 3:00.
No, I can't.
Is that everything this month? I think that's everything, we'll build, we'll fill out our schedule a little more. Okay, is that a matter of? All right, moving on on our agenda here, we're gonna have to get crews.
So, Miles?
Yes.
You'll give that info to us, and then, we're gonna have to do a two-person thing with each one of those, and maybe, Casey, you can, whether in that, sure, appoint people, you know, as you chair, advise, chair and vice, chair and vice, if that is not flexible, not anyone, I mean, people, just two people.
Right, so you don't get wrong.
And then, we're gonna have to post.
Okay.
So, Miles, you be the pusher on that, get it to Casey?
Yep.
And Casey, you be the pusher, get it to get on.
Okay, and if we can get someone to give us a plan for Old Settlers?
I got it, I got it.
Good, and we'll just enlarge it.
I got it. You want it right now, I go grab it.
Do you have one, too?
I think so, don't you?
Well, Scott, why don't you do that, and we'll?
We need you for the financials.
Can you go get it, Steve?
I can, I don't know if I have a little one.
You have a little one?
I don't know.
Uh, we'll get what I've got.
Okay. Okay, moving on to approval of financials.
Uh, we're 18%, we got about 4,500, gotta hit us for Miles Kimberly, we had all water main break.
Oh, that sounds easy, clearly, right?
Yeah.
4,500.
Yeah.
Do we have any purchases or any, what are we talking about, that grooming equipment? Do we, do we take any steps on that?
No.
Is that 4,100 reflected in here?
No, it is not.
And that's gonna be under what, maintenance and repair?
Yes.
I noticed one of our, our goals was to increase our, our budget, and we seem to always be at this point of, we're happy with the year, not having to spend anything.
Yeah, we're pretty darn good at that.
We got a bill here for $27,000, so. Oh, all right. If you wanna spend that, that's okay.
Any other questions on the financials?
I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the financials?
I'll say it, anybody?
Supported by you almost.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
All those opposed?
Motion carries, okay. We are at budget time once again, and you were just talking about increasing it, we left everything the same last year, and it was my intentions to leave it the same again this year, hopefully, we can give it no reduction, I hope. This also kind of ties in with the halftime position discussion, I don't know what, have you thought about that anymore, as to what you wanna do?
Well, for this year only, I'd like to go halftime, keep David as long as we can, I have about seven more weeks with him.
Okay.
And then, we'll be done, and that's like, first August, so we got a lot of stuff going, we got a lot of stuff accomplished already.
Okay.
Next year, I don't think I could support halftime, which is full-time for the summer.
Right.
I'm halftime in the parks.
Right.
So, to just, you know, catching up on stuff.
Yeah.
A quarter time like we originally planned would be great.
Would be.
Yeah.
Okay, so trying, trying to keep him on there for this year?
Yeah.
Until?
Till he's gone.
Yeah.
Honestly, I hope he's gone soon, because he needs to get a job, but, he's really a lot of help, I don't mean.
Right, but he needs a job himself, is what you're saying.
For those of you that don't know, David's job here got eliminated, so he's been working on it full-time, where he was only with parks.
Quarter time.
Quarter time, but not every day, you know, rainy days, like Tom, you know, go find something else.
Day one.
Day one.
And as far as other budget items, well, I don't know if Steve wanted to have any further discussion, or you want questions answered, but, I mean, basically, the status of our budget is the same, as far as $45,000 capital outlay, and I'd like to keep that the same with the expenditure of the grub shack coming up, and hopefully, grant application again, and other projects that come along, the budget's literally the same. It doesn't really matter.
Well, we got a lot of hopes and dreams, you know, for, you know, fixing up grub shacks and trails and stuff at Veronica, so, I, you know, there's not a lot of room to wiggle this budget.
Right, right, yeah, I understand.
Still have the.
And I understand, you know, what's going on in this building and next door, so.
Still have the, the issue of, along the water, with the, with the fishing.
Oh, right, right.
We need to figure out what we're gonna do with that.
Talking budgets, Steve?
Ah, good. Excuse me, Ty, when you said we have the liability issue?
Well, we had talked about, we had talked about Doc, and, and, I don't know where we've done on that, but, last year at this time, you said it was an issue of safety.
Risk management, so put up a sign, sort of your own resume or cover.
Yep, and that's what Risk Management told me on our tour, I have it written, basically.
Where the discussion is at on, on other solutions or additions to that issue, that's part of the grant stuff, that's all just in my notes, set up in the shelf.
But if we're, if we're sitting here with one in our budget, we oughta, we hadn't oughta ever not spend all the money, and if, if, if we don't have, we're, a place to spend on this, we know we got a need there, we oughta start hacking away at it.
There's a lot of needs everywhere, all of ours.
I keep swimming on, uh, scheduling through appointments, and they got canceled, and I need to put no effort into coming back to the board and everything, and what's caused it, but, we'll just leave it at that, I guess I gotta get moving.
Where are we in the budget?
Well, just brief discussion, but I was, I was thinking of leaving things the same.
I, I don't see any problem with that myself. I think we tweaked a lot of things, um, last year. Scott, are we okay with 20 grand on, on period maintenance?
No.
There, there, that is a very important answer that everybody's sitting at this table has to take seriously. I mean, it is honestly the time we take that answer seriously.
So, where are we and what do we need?
Well, we just used 4,500 of that in one incident.
We're gonna be a little over 10, 10 grand at this time, we got 6,000 right now, almost nine, or almost 11,000.
Everything's gone up, paint, lumber, should you name it, labor.
Well, do we ever completely complete all the projects of our hopes and dreams of keeping these parks up and looking nice, or are we always behind? Our job sitting here, the hats we should have on sitting here should be Parks and Rec hats, carrying them, we're always behind, we cannot know that we have commissioners' hats on later. We sitting here today are Parks and Rec people, and we have to act like we want to get any and everything we need to run these parks. We cannot hope or. We cannot hope or think as though, oh, I don't wanna have to deal with that up there. We have to deal here as parks and rec people. And if our maintenance guy and we know that we look at our parks and they're drastically deficient constantly, we have to ask for more money.
I have no problem with that. How much more do you wanna ask for? I'm serious.
I can't tell you how much more.
I mean, you put it down.
I mean.
Oh, uh, oh fifteen was fifteen one, oh sixteen was twenty-six nine, oh seventeen was twenty-seven five.
So it's gone up six, seven thousand here.
You wanna go for twenty-five?
Yeah.
So everything will change.
Yeah, if we set forty, we're not, they're just. So.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if they're gonna say no, we just have to act like we want to try and push our parks.
Twenty-three, it's called thirty-four, five.
Can I ask for thirty? Maybe they give us twenty-five?
Yep.
Casey's working on this issue.
If you ask for twenty-five, they're gonna say twenty-two.
Yeah. What about contractual services? How we doing there? What do you think, Scott?
I didn't hear the question, do I?
Contractual services, we're at eleven-five. Forty-three percent. I think we should get rid of dumb stuff. Oh, oh fifteen was eight-five, oh sixteen was thirteen-eight.
You can't.
Oh seventeen was twenty-three-three. I think we had some cleanup from the little.
I wish it was last year's budget, I didn't even realize your.
So we, we don't have to do it all, this is just kinda a brief discussion, we can, we can have an executive meeting.
Yeah, what's the date? It has to be in like next week, the twenty ninth? So, you know, we could do a motion to have the executive committee schedule a meeting to hammer now, we're just kinda trying to gather some info.
Next Friday. Let's schedule an executive meeting. We'll get, schedule it for tomorrow.
I move that we have the executive committee hammer out the budget at a meeting of the executive committee, committee to be arranged next week by Casey.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I will get on that. Give us a meeting.
Can, can Scott have a loop on that?
Yes.
I will.
Anyway, before we leave today, we just.
Okay. Okay, moving on to approval of meeting minutes. May fifteenth, twenty nineteen, Laurel wanted to email those up for us.
The halftime position.
It's like, it helps, I think, if you're asking for quarter time next year.
So we're good, you're gonna approve his hours for this summer for this year?
That will be up to me. But we can make a motion. I was gonna entertain a motion when we get to that.
I thought he was okay with from last year.
Who to approve the meeting minutes for May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen?
Support. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I'm gonna turn it off. Okay, now we're looking for a recommendation on a motion for the halftime position. I'd make a motion that we approve, uh, what was already approved as a quarter time position for this summer, to be a halftime position. That's like. And then reduce to, to a quarter time next year, or do you wanna, do you wanna include that in the motion?
Yeah. Let's still have, let's do halftime period.
Halftime.
Get it.
All your next year?
Yeah.
Okay, just cross that. So that his motion will stand. Second? Yomans? All those in favor? Open it up.
We don't have a reporter. She's taking.
She is, it's so.
When we're making these motions, we could say, we have to say.
Motion by Travis.
Who made it and whatever, so she can tie it down.
Okay.
So we have two motions, I can't remember who they were.
I seconded both of them, Mr. Pope.
So Chair, we gotta say, motion by this. Anyway, we gotta say who's making it, who's second.
Okay. I made the motion, Travis. Yomans was sec, uh, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That will be moved on, we'll have to get approval from the county board for, for, that'll be our recommendation. Okay, moving on to parks brochures.
So maybe their, uh, motion Laurel could be that we would move to make a recommendation to the county board.
Correct.
If that's okay with the mover and the seconder.
Sure. Support, yes.
Okay.
Question, don't we have, we have approval for halftime for this summer?
Quarter time.
Quarter time.
But it's, but it's halftime for the summer. Because.
So that really confuses that economy, to be honest.
And we're not asking for a budget increase for this summer, we're asking to continue with what the board already approved, which was half of his time for this.
No, he's asking, we're asking for additional monies to keep him working through the summer. He'll be used, his hours will be used up in seven weeks.
Oh, okay. Cause he's working, he's working full-time now, or he was stretching it out over the summer. So the hours that were allotted to him will, will run out in August.
Before August, yeah.
Moving on to the parks brochures, Dr. Steve?
Uh, we're running out of parks brochures. Uh, I think Bob was the big push on the last go. Designed it, he and his wife designed it, wrote it. Carried it over to the enterprise and the whole nine yards. So I guess we need to consider whether or not we're gonna redo or what we're gonna do. I make a motion that we give Bob the authority to go ahead and tweak the new version of the old brochure as need be. Possibly new photos, possibly a couple of change in words, very minor, to get another brochure for us. I second that.
Motion by Christiansen, seconded by Pope.
Now we'll see what Bob says.
Yeah, Bob, Bob's gonna have to accept that.
Well, I don't have a copy of the most recent brochure. So I need to look at that to, you know, what changes, if any, we need.
I can run and get a copy if you wanna discuss. It begins and ends. I might have one, but I'm gonna have to go through all of his credits.
Well, even so, you can take it home and look at it and come back with any recommendations if you'd like.
Well, we're gonna need to do something.
That was last year's brochure, right?
Yeah, right. We're gonna need to do something.
Yeah, it'd be two months before.
By the way, we can't wait.
Summer's over.
A lot, a lot, summer's coming over, yeah.
Do we just wanna print more of those?
That's what I would say.
Don't you have Bob say, print those?
Okay.
And then for next year, redo it.
Do you have to still have that on your computer?
Yes.
I, I'd say whether we can do this or not, it's gonna depend on whether the enterprise has kept in the trail of the used to print the brochure.
My assumption is they have, they, I think they keep those, and I bet all we have to do, Bob, is you call them.
Uh, they're gonna have to find them.
You're in charge.
Thanks.
They'll have them, Bob, it'll be just a phone call to
Sure, well.
Put another supply.
Is, are, are, you've been asked if, if we want to do the expenditure of printing brochures?
Yeah, but as a. I'm where, I have no idea how much that costs, it's a difficult, it's kind of a difficult situation.
Or is it our budget, yeah, I got something, I'm sorry. Well, we have a printing budget. If that covers. Or is the question, do we wanna update this thing?
Well, that one was updated from the.
That's what I'm trying to figure out the question now, so.
I didn't say it can't, it's like five hundred dollars or something.
Yeah, well, it's. It was up in that range of five hundred dollars. That's an update from.
It won't be in there.
You just had your printing and publishing.
Well.
Budget, but.
We may have a problem in it. My wife has started to charge this business a year or so ago. And she's gotten rid of some of the software she uses.
Well, so how about when Steve gets back up here, we get him to retract his motion? And we make a motion to get it printed. Just that one. Just till next year.
I, I don't know whether we're gonna be able to do it or not.
Well. Well, look, he's got enough right now, we don't even need it. My box is reprinted.
Well, that, let me suggest.
We're having the last few.
Let me suggest this, just, just reprint, case there's no date on there.
That's what we're saying, well, we're gonna have, I'm gonna have Steve retract his motion and then print, we're just gonna make a motion to print more of those.
That's the best thing to do.
Okay.
We just your motion and make a new motion to simply reprint the old states. No update, no nothing. Just reprint what? So I have the authority to do a redo? Just call up the enterprise and go?
Yes.
Are you doing it?
We're gonna make a motion to try and get that authority. So I withdraw the previous motion. Bob?
Do you support?
This is in the visitor's guide.
Right.
Okay, and when they did the visitor's guide this last time, I tweaked the verbiage to make it accurate. So when they redo this, they should use at least the tweaked verbiage that's in the visitor's guide.
You can specify that when you want.
Well, so if we should have the enterprise do the tweaks, that's fine, but I'm saying my, my wife got rid of the software to do some of this stuff.
I see.
And so she started out a business.
If you, uh, if you can, if you're good, I'll work with Laurel to get these reprinted using what was in the visitor's guide.
I move to have Ty Whistle work with Laurel to have these brochures reprinted. Quantity and what we do last time.
I'm out and I took Steve five hundred dollars.
I'm always gonna get a quantity of brochures.
We don't know unless they.
Well, I don't know, just.
But he knows. We don't wanna spend a ton of bucks, I think of a.
Not to exceed five hundred dollars.
I say. John, do you second the withdrawal of Steve's motion? Cause didn't you second that?
Or just.
No, no.
I support.
Okay. Okay, we cleaned up the other motions.
Casey, try, try and get that to our poll taker.
All those in favor of printing brochures?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? You can print brochures. Steve made them, yes.
Yeah.
Who? Steve seconded the last motion, who made the first motion, Clayton?
Steve made it.
I made the first motion.
And he retracted it.
I mean.
Now, now, I'm ready for the second.
Clayton made the second one.
I took.
I, I need some more.
I need the offer.
He made the one, he made the motion, that's right.
As quick as a.
Okay. Moving on to committee reports and recommendations, Veronica Valley?
None.
Miles Kimberly?
Um, we had a meeting. The something we probably should have addressed when, uh, close this year, is one of the things we talked about was asking a motion by Russell Tass, Goslin Zubeck, project engineer at Cloud Center, uh, to redesign this as part of the contract to work for the Parks and Recreation Plan, uh, seconded by Ball that we passed. Cause we were trying to talk about what we should do next. Uh, we talked about the walking path, we've got some different options, we've talked about how we approach that. And, um, also the baseball diamonds are kinda high on, on the list. So one of the things we thought is, well, if we're doing all this planning, maybe we, see if we could bring, have that be part of the planning or probably, obviously, maybe an extra fee. But maybe if Cloud tells us what we should do right next step, cause we wanna actually start working on something.
And when we have the meetings?
Yeah.
Next month, are you ready to talk to them about that?
Yep.
No, three, one of the things.
Oh, I said, good. Oh, good, not.
I think it speaks right to this. If we're going to go for a recreational passport grant for the paved walkway, for example, at Miles Kimberly, that has to be in the capital expenditure
Boom.
Plan.
Okay.
That's a timing issue. It's gotta be in there before you can even make the application for a recreational passport grant. It's not true of the trust fund grants we were doing it at Veronica. But it'd be more likely that kind of development would be covered by recreational passport and therefore, and that's something that I didn't know, caught me this year, was we couldn't change, shift, because it has to be included in capital improvement plans. Whatever that means of that, but.
Our capital improvement plan or the county's?
The park, right.
Oh, the county?
I think the county's capital improvement plan, yes.
Because it's really county's, but county's money that's allocated to the Parks and Recreation.
We're, we're complete on C I P for Veronica Valley and for Miles. We don't have a whole lot of anything in C I P for old settlers.
With not a lot there in there. Okay. Moving on to the tennis court update. Chet Janik, myself, uh, and a couple other people, Peachy Rattenbach, um, um, Silverland, met with Sanders Scott again a couple weeks ago, just to kinda get an update and get, get an idea of where we wanna go with this tennis court idea. And we are proceeding forward. It's still in their interest that they wanna explore options there. Chet is working with legal counsel to draft a, basically just a draft document, a contract agreement. And we're working on getting some numbers as to what it would cost for the, um, courts themselves, cause they're, they're wondering what kind of partnership we can work out, cause if they're gonna, if they're gonna pay for everything anyways, they might just do it up at the school, which they have, they'll have a massive cost to level out an area to fit the courts, but that might be worth it in the long run for them to just have them there at, at the school. So if they won't, if they're not gonna get any partnership out of us as far as some funds or maintenance costs on the road, or whatever it may be, they may opt to put them on campus. But that, we're moving forward with it anyways and continuing the discussion. And getting a draft contract where we can start. No, we don't agree to this, and try and, try and get something figured out. And we had some basic terms, I think it was seventy-five, twenty-five for the cost to start with in this contract. Just to start some conversation and see where, where it goes from there. But at least get a draft document in front of us to start having some conversations and seeing what we're flying, what we're. I just talked to Chet earlier today, since Sanders leaving, uh, try and have, he's not leaving until August. Try and have another, hopefully get this contract draft back and meet with him again and just sort of maybe even present that to his board and keep the ball rolling before he leaves, so we don't.
John, please don't rush it.
Go cold. What's that?
Please don't rush anything.
There's no rush, we're just trying to keep the ball moving at this pretty standard.
Why? Why? I'm just wondering why we're rushing. Because the new interim superintendent may not want this, or the new superintendent himself.
Yeah, this, I mean, this isn't gonna happen this.
There's too many changes going on right now.
I understand that. And it's up here, this is including the board, not just Sanders Scott. I mean, he has to go to his.
I understand the report, the board's going through changes too.
I understand that, we're not, there's no rushing of this, it's just, we went several months without any conversation being had and not knowing where things stood, and we just wanted to keep the ball rolling and have a moving document, a working document to go off and keep the conversation going.
Before they. If they wanna pay for everything. Alter their. Buy all means.
Well, they, they do, but if they're going to pay for all of it, then they won't put it at Miles, is what they're getting at.
Well, that's not what we said last time.
Exactly. I know that. And that was, I think, some very misconceived information, but.
I wonder from what.
That doesn't matter. We don't need to get into that whole deal.
But it didn't start with them paying for everything. I mean, it started as them paying for most of it and then it turned into them paying for everything, but I think we're back to.
And that got interpreted.
What they want, what they want exclusive use and order at certain times.
No, you're absolutely right. They do not want exclusive use. They only want exclusive use for tournaments.
Right, at certain times.
Yes, but they're, it's not exclusive just for, it's, they would be open to the public.
Right.
But during tournament time, they would reserve first rights and that would be posted on the site.
Or a certain price.
That's the update. We don't need to get too far off down. Second item underneath Miles Kimberly was the approval of donation policy.
We, we didn't, um, we discussed it, but we did not get a, we didn't have, have an approved donation policy. So that was a little, yeah, cause Laurel was looking for that too and I went back and I, it, it doesn't really exist. And in the minutes, we never came to a conclusion.
And even, even the one that we have for, uh, old settlers needs to be revisited because of the new, um, rules and policy that.
For the county.
That we have from the county. We're gonna need to go to the county board of commissioners for approval of the donation, um, for most anything. I think.
Over five hundred.
There's a five hundred dollar, I think there's something about two hundred and fifty also.
Two hundred and fifty with like an, uh, they, somebody donated. It's a donated item.
Like a piece of equipment or something.
Yeah, but it's worth more than two hundred and fifty dollars, but it's all, it, it's not, they're not donating cash value, but if the item's worth more than two hundred and fifty or something like that.
This is a new policy coming from the.
From the county commissioners. Yes, they, they want to, basically they.
They wanna, they don't want something appearing as a surprise to them.
Right.
Like a pink tree or.
Something that the board doesn't want. They want, they wanna oversee it as well, is basically what was.
They're not, they're not coming the paperclips yet, but they do want the donation.
They don't have a, it's not necessarily a policy on what can be donated. It's just the dollar value of what's being donated, so they can oversee it, oversee it.
All donations received in excess of five hundred dollars on behalf of Leona County shall be approved by the Board of Commissioners. The county administrators shall provide monthly written reports outlining all donations received. A, any non-cash donations, tangible goods and/or mercantile with an appropriate value, approximate value of over two hundred and fifty dollars donated to the county shall be approved by the Board of Commissioners prior to acceptance.
So we'll need to redo much of the visitor's.
Looks like we all have to do this.
Yes, yes.
I'm not sure of the intention.
So the next two items are new.
One thing about, um, Miles too, um, I met with Scott and Camma and we toured, um, on the Kubota. The, um, project that was completed, the logging project. And, uh, there are some items that, um, you know, need to be addressed. There are maybe four to six brush piles that are really close to the discolfer area that need to be, um, wood chipped. There are at least six to ten beach trees that are two plus feet in diameter. Just the trunk, all trimmed up and everything, but they're sitting out and up. And it's, um, not something that I think is appropriate. Camma said if they were chunked up into sections and laying them in the ground with good soil contact, that it would be, not be an issue from, uh, forestry standpoint. The way they are sitting, uh, they don't, it doesn't look good. So.
These are trunks that were.
It was the, yeah.
They were never cut.
They're from, they're, I don't know, maybe what, forty feet to sixty feet, this bigger amount.
Target.
Just laying them up and exposed to just, wouldn't you say laying, they're not still the trunk connected to the roots. No, 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 no. They're cut down.
They're gone.
They're, 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 they're cut down, but they're not, there's not good soil contact. They're on other branches. And then the other thing that needs to be done is that the perimeter trail, when they did it with their little nipper, there was a fair amount of snow. So they went and did it and now the snow's gone and we've got, um, I don't know how many stumps sticking up the air.
Did you talk to Darren Scott?
Not about the malsin.
Okay. Cause I, I had discussed that with Jack and he said that they would be, I don't, I don't know if he had the cost shared or they would donate the time or whatever, but.
Hey, he got kinda pissy with me on everything and he had, I'm putting bulldozer out there. We're just gonna throw it. I'm like, nah, you know.
They've got a, they've got a grinder, a front mount grinder.
Yeah.
That they can go through and make all those stumps and all the trash and the perimeter trail into little wood chip pieces. It's just a matter of cost. And then kind of the consensus was that Steve, you go and make some phone calls and, and maybe talk to Casey and see if we can have a meeting, uh, and see what kind of deal we can get out of thereings to get this work done. You know, it's a park, it's a showpiece, it's.
So he, he never came in that with you there?
He did and we worked out, cleaned up the major spots to get the trails open. Then he ended up bringing a, a skid steer out with clamps. And I thought the guys could be out there all day. He's done in four hours. He did everything I asked.
Okay.
Was it enough? No. And, and Jack wasn't willing to do more, basically.
I, we can ask him for just a straight price.
Yeah, he gets the items.
I mean, the logger was blaming another guy and another guy was blaming him and I'm stuck in the middle.
Mr. Lord, it's, um, Miles Kimberly, the size of one should let you chip it.
Some, yeah, there's some brush.
All the brush piles can be chipped. Uh, the big logs, those aren't chipped items. If they were chunked into certain length pieces, then they'd tan out faster.
Well.
Rolled off onto the ground, I think that would.
I don't know what the plan is for these trails. For wood chips, it's not a bad thing to put down for the trails. But there's some reasons to get out. I guess rid of them in the search and it's a useful application.
I think, I think if there were, say if we did six.
I really thought they were gonna go spread wood chips for us though.
Yeah, if we did, if we did six brush piles and we had six nice big mounds of wood chips, if we could get them to leave them in a mound, there's some potential of scooping them with a bucket and drizzling them somewhere. That might be something that Scott could do or not, but that, that, I don't think that's a bad idea.
I can get ahold of Jack again and see about it. Say, hey, thanks for doing what you did. We there's some work that we need to get done. Can you come get us a place out of it?
Campbell would talk to his dad. I don't remember his name.
Tom.
Tom.
I can talk to Jack. He'll be all right. And I, we'll, we'll see about, I mean, he was, he was open to the idea with me. Jack is a difficult person to deal with. I understand that very well. And I'll see what he's open to or what, and if not, we'll call.
So our perimeter major trail is no longer used, was that what it is?
It's not complete. It was never, we never had a perimeter major trail.
Yeah, but that was kind of priority. When we were putting in a boundary fence or boundary stakes and all that. That no longer exists or just didn't happen.
It just never happened.
It's closer to existing than it ever has been. God, it's still full.
We've got water in the wintertime and we, I, we kinda just snuck in.
I got you, I got you.
Should put it as an action.
Yeah, I have a way to handle that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll talk to Jack and see what he's open to and see if I can't get him to come out there and we, we there and say, hey, this is.
We've come to.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not promising any better outcome, but I'll get, I'll get ahold of him again and see, see about it. So moving on to old settlers, um, we did the local community reform church. As of last night, I got a bid from my cousin, formal bid, um, I guess, take a look at it for the grub shack remodel. This, this would be to have, he didn't put it on here, but, um, the construction would happen in spring of twenty twenty, next, next spring. Twenty-seven thousand, five fifty. And I asked him about, with it being, you know, basically a year from now, if we were to approve an amount of not to exceed twenty-eight thousand to adjust for some fluctuation and materials, basically. No labor, the labor will, labor and everything will stay the same with a two by fours on that ten cents or something. And he said that would be more than enough, probably, but just to be safe. That's where it stands. We can accept it, table it. Whatever you want to do.
We recommended the board of commissioners to approve the contract with, uh, Jay Schippe's instruction to create the old settler grub shack in two thousand twenty. Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Thirty dollars and not to exceed twenty-eight thousand seven six.
I, I talked to him about twenty-eight thousand and he was comfortable with that. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Wesel, second by Yomans.
Is this then the only official bid that's come in?
Uh, no, I did receive one other one versus seventy, yeah, sixty-eight.
Oh, that's, that's right.
Well, that's called a list.
Yeah. And I, I had solicited a couple other, or was in the process of getting a couple other bids, not soliciting, but getting people to bid on it. And one was very close and he said it was, he was gonna bid twenty-eight thousand, but he just didn't have time to bid on it and.
I asked him on the people too, and they're just so busy with it.
Yeah, there's.
And that's a much more reasonable number.
I, I did, uh, cause I discovered Seeds is moving into the belly next to mine. I grabbed one of their crew leaders or whatever in the parking lot. It was just, they, they had no idea, but I said, would you guys be interested in this? And they were interested in hearing about it. I actually meant to try and see if I'd get a plan or something to give to them. But, uh, they were talking about, maybe ISD has got a career type program. They're like, well, yeah, cause the only reason they thought they might have some interest is because they've got a, a group that's actually a little more talented, but they didn't, nothing amiss with that. They just didn't say, oh no, we're not interested. They haven't seen it. I have no idea what the price would be. And I honestly, from what she was saying, like specifically them, it might've been above their skill set, but they had another group that might've been able to do it. So that's the only, I would, if he's gonna start it in the spring.
Yeah.
That sounds like.
Spring, early summer, but he knows, he's a member of the Masonic one. He just knows it has to be done by old settlers and everything. So. And once, once they get started, it's only him and one other guy. Um, they are extremely fast and they're very good with the do. Once they get started on it, we'll not figure this out.
It's a big deal.
Yeah. It's something that we've been talking about.
It is, and it is a big deal for the park. And I mean, it's a, it's a building standpoint.
And also that, that.
What's the width of the current building?
Width?
Width?
It's like thirty feet or something, thirty-six feet.
So we're adding a twenty-four by thirty area.
Not thirty-six feet. I don't remember playing with the foreground. It's not, we're not doubling the size of it.
No.
So.
The drawing.
That we are at.
It's been going on for three years.
Yeah. It would be nice to cross an item off the checklist.
Do it.
Is there any other discussion or any questions?
I'm good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
She know who made the motion, who said?
Yeah, I, I probably was. Wesel made the motion, Yomans seconded.
Thank you for, uh.
Moving on on the agenda, um, the policies and memorial donations are kinda mute at this point until we revamp them to, um, match the board policy, the full board policy. Parks use policy. I don't think there's any.
We at our meeting did make some recommendations in our minutes to update our section.
Okay.
Mainly just to comply with the sign that we had presented a couple meetings ago, but that was about it.
And we, Old Settlers hasn't met in Veronica.
I provided Laurel with.
With your comments.
With comments.
Yes.
From our discussion about general policy. And I'm waiting for her, she asked one of us to do some next step when she pulls all the pieces together and I'm waiting to get that, to do that.
Right. And I, I was discussing that with her, especially since these guys, you know, this is coming up again as far as the use agreements and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, I, I was reminded with where we were and it was frustrating, I don't know, for everybody with the use on, on the old settlers for the coaster, but we really need to, we need to wrap this up and tie a ribbon on it to make it easy to use our parks and it's.
For sale.
It can't be as hard as it is.
And I, I think they're, the draft, I mean, the agreement that is being used right now, I think will, will work quite well. If we can get the insurance figured out and the waiver, there's, they're requesting a waiver from every participant in the event.
That's just.
Is very difficult. And I'm gonna, I'll talk to Laurel about this tomorrow and see if we can't get legal counsel.
That's what shot down collateral to yourself.
Correct. And I, I'm, we wanna protect, protect ourselves, obviously, but, you know, and that's, that, that was drafted by legal counsel and that's what we've been going off of, cause we haven't approved anything else. But, um, I think that, that agreement itself would work quite well.
And you can't ask a lawyer what he thinks and how to protect it, cause they're gonna go all over. They're gonna.
Tell him to protect it, he's gonna protect it.
And they're gonna go way overboard.
So I'll talk to her about it tomorrow and I'm hoping that we can get this figured out, cause with the gun and church and move on from there and maybe bring that back next month with those words or, or send it out to everyone and see if we can't get this.
I would encourage you to use the kids fishing day as the model.
You do that.
When you're talking about getting a waiver for every person.
Well, it's, yeah, it's unreasonable.
Use that as the model. I mean, you got people driving by and they see the sign.
Yeah, you're not, you're, it's impossible. But which, like which set of families? That was mentioned earlier today. The way that, the way that this agreement stands, it basically eliminates anybody, any group event from happening at the park. So I don't think that that's anywhere that we wanna go.
Well, particularly a group that has actually some assets, cause honestly, like Old Settlers Committee, I'd advise them sign it. Will they bankrupt you? Oh darn.
Right.
But if you got a real estate, you can't sign that.
Right. That's, yes, if you have something to protect, I mean, there, there's something there, yes. You're, you're exactly right. But anyways, I'll work with Laurel on this more and then try and get this progressed here soon or get something for us to finalize.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the park rule, I mean, we don't have anything more to add to that right now. The maintenance goals. Nothing for us right now. Public comment? Christian comments?
It's gonna take some homework from all of us. We'll do things now. Find your plan and this donation or the, the whole.
The usage policy.
Uh, yeah, group, group use policy. We're all gotta put in some, some homework hours on these things, cause we gotta get, uh, we got a lot of steps that are gonna grind us through fall. So when you're asked to do something, look at the, the goals, objectives, the action plans for your park, please do it. It's gonna help us move.
Okay.
Just a thought with dealing with the church, they may, and not that we tell them what they want, but thinking of it, cause they may want a bigger policy if they've got an asset.
Yeah.
To protect.
Jeff with that? Nothing for me? Motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
We are adjourned.
Right.
No, you'll have. What I did is I went through what we had in the visitor's guide.
Oh.
And this, and I know this.
Absolutely outstanding.
I talked to the young lady. And then she, he went back and. But I'm not sure how much they have. Give me five hundred dollars for it. Yeah, that'll work.
Strummer is in there?
Barton Hagan says that, um, they will not be ready by the.
Oh, man.
But I, but I think they may be, I think they may, maybe for the. Those are the early glows that.
Well, I know.
We, we always, early glows like that. My start date is. I've never started.